We're going to resume the meeting, please. Please take your seats. Gary told me I could do that once in the course of the meeting. I hit it three times? Yeah, well, sorry. Okay. We are now at Article 51. Patrick.
Is this one related to aliens? Oh, no, that's Area 51, sorry. I move that the town amend the general bylaws by adding a new Article 31 as set forth in warrant Article 51 to address the regulation of short-term rentals as defined in Massachusetts General Law, Part 1, Title IX, Chapter 64G, Section 1, to ensure observance of health and safety standards and compliance with applicable Massachusetts general laws. Thank you.
Is there a second? Seconded. Okay. Is there any discussion on the motion? This gentleman, please.
Hi, all. Stephen Stern, Emerson Lane. I wish to speak in favor of this proposal. I believe that, you know, Airbnbs and -- I'm sorry? Is this better? Okay. Excuse that. I believe that Airbnbs and short-term rentals are a growing sector. I believe that the town needs rules to address it. We refer to marijuana farming and the rules associated with marijuana. That didn't exist some years ago. Similarly, the extent of short-term rentals did not exist some years ago, and the town needs to have an ability to deal with it. We're a popular destination here. I think we're only going to become more popular, and this is going to be more extensive. And I think we also have to consider that in the rules and regulations proposed now and what we do over the years as this expands and becomes ever greater part of the housing stock of our town. That -- now we go to the second reason for my support of this is that we live adjacent to a unit that was purchased and renovated for the sole purpose of a short-term rental. By the way, I should say that this is our experience. As this grows, it could be any one of our experiences. The unit in -- for our experience, the unit here was renovated for this sole purpose of being a short-term rental. For example, garage was removed in favor of more living space. We're told by Tri-Town Health that this house was rated as three-bedroom with a six-person septic. In our area, houses are close to each other. House in question is a little over half acre. I think it's 0.62 acre. In our experience, we've seen five or six carloads of people in the house at any one point in time. We've been told by people who have worked in the house that it's upwards of 15 people that have been there. It's been owned by two different LLCs over the past year. Unfortunately, the front yard has had septic odors. The house has had septic odors. There've been numerous noise complaints. We've in fact made a noise complaint ourselves when our windows were closed when we were on a Zoom call, and the Latin music was so loud from the house that we weren't able to complete our Zoom call. We live by Wheatley. We live by Camp Mackinac. We live by Tagawood. But we found them all to be great neighbors and are minimally, if at all invasive, to our area. So, you know, we understand it's a favorable economic opportunity. We know that this is part of what's going to go on, but we need some rules so that it's not at a detriment to us, the residents. We're the stakeholders. We live here. We only ask that people rent it per rules. We think the rules are common sense. We ask renters to be respectful of Stockbridge and its residents, and we ask that we all give the town the ability to have rules to do their jobs.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Yes. Barney.
Yeah, Barney Edmonds, Old Stockbridge Road. I agree almost 100% with the gentleman before me said. However, I can't support fully this article without thinking about the definition. And I have an amendment, and I'll read it, and I'll tell you why. I propose, under definition, which is number two, to read "short-term rental and owner-occupied property." That's it. "An owner-occupied property." Excluding five words: tenant occupied or non-occupied. I think the people, residents of Stockbridge, know how to take care of their property, know how to talk to their neighbors, know how to ask for help from the police or any department. However, people who are in a B&amp;B, I mean, not a B&amp;B, an Airbnb or VRBO or any kind of short-term rental without the owner owning that building and occupying it, it doesn't have to be there, it can go away for a month, but if you own something, you're going to be taking care of it, you're going to ask whoever you rented to to take care of it as well. Excuse me.
Now, Barney, could you just read the motion again that you made?
Yes. Definition: "Short-term rental and owner-occupied property, including but not limited to an apartment, house, cottage, condominium, or a furnished accommodation that is not a hotel, motel, lodging house, or bed-and-breakfast establishment."
Is there a second? Second. Just a moment. I just want to get a copy. Can I have the -- your printed motion, please?
Wait, I'd like to speak to this person.
Please.
Barney, the reason why the language was included for "ten-occupied" or "non-owner-occupied" is that we cannot by state law discriminate against those types of occupants. And if you -- if this motion passes, you will significantly open us up to challenge based on state law. And so I would respectfully request that you withdraw the motion.
I don't think I can do that. I really think, as John said before, the short-term rental market, not just in Stockbridge, not just in the United States, but all over the world, is changing tourism. And it's a $10 billion industry now. It could grow to $20 billion. We're up against giant forces. If the state of the Commonwealth wants to say, "No, I can't do that," I think they have to try first. Because I don't think it's right to have people buy houses, take them out of stock, take out of our limited housing stock, and turn them into rentals for short-term use.
But Barney, if we remove those types of owners from this, they won't be regulated. You'll be exempting them from regulation. You're basically making it easier for those types of folks to pursue these opportunities if you exempt them from all these things that are required now of only residents.
Barney, with all due respect to your concerns, which I understand, I, based upon advice of counsel, I am ruling your motion out of order.
Okay. I will draw it then. But I must say, I must defer a decline to support this article. I think it's an error. I think we need to rewrite it, find a way that's going to be appropriate to benefit the residents and owners of property and stuff, and not to hurt them, and not to hurt the town. Because the impact on infrastructure, on sewer, and water, and traffic, and noise, and this was talked about, aroma, all the things that come with it are detrimental. Look at Barcelona, look at Amsterdam, look at New York City, look at San Francisco, Chicago. All those cities are fighting this. I think we can fight it too.
Duly noted. Yes.
I'm Mary Ann Miles from Pine Street, and I have a question, which is, what percentage? I know 75% of the houses, the housing in Stockbridge is owned by people who are away or don't live here full-time. And I'd like to know the number of units, as motel units, of Airbnbs and housing that is casual and -- I have no idea. Do you?
Yeah, a couple of points. We don't believe that 75% of the town is owned by second homeowners. It's a hard number to completely quantify. The latest census figures from 2019, I believe, say that there's something like 1,687 residences, but there's only about 1,400 parcels, I believe. Right. And so the bottom line is it's about 51% Roxanne believes that is owned by non-owner, non-owner-occupied parcels. Last summer, I did a study with a company called Granicus, and they identified about 107 parcels, I'm not, sorry, 107 residences that were available on Airbnb at that moment in time. Once again, it's not just Airbnb. There's 50 different platforms now that people can put their properties on. But there were, they did a survey of all 50 platforms, and there were about 107 that were available at that time. Now, that might be a resident who's trying to rent out a bedroom. Speaking for myself, I'm certainly not opposed to those kinds of folks, but in aggregate, you know, we've got, we had about 107 last August at that moment in time that were available for rent on the platforms.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, hi. Tom Fine in from Southern Rattlesnake Mountain Road and 18 Mackinac Shores Road. You addressed part of my question, but my second question, and I think the intent of the prior amendment was really to limit short-term rentals to owner-occupied buildings so that it's, so that someone's renting out, they're taking care of the property. And I understand that, and I applaud that, but I think we need to regulate this entire industry. And if we want to make the intent that only owners who live in their buildings can rent that building, is that possible? Is that legal? Or is that a description that we need to go for with another bylaw? Because I strongly support.
Tom, this includes a ban on professional operators, which is defined under Massachusetts General Law as a non-resident or owner-occupied property that is managing two or more units for rental. That is in this, and it was specifically inserted based on the opportunity that the state of Massachusetts gives us to do so.
Okay. Then I would strongly support that we pass this bylaw now.
Yes.
Yes. Loretta Schio on Hawthorne Road in Lenox, Lenox, sorry. We have mailing agents. And I rise in support of this bylaw as well. I think the point's been made very definitely that you need some kind of regulation here. Without that, we simply will be overrun, and it will be impossible to live near them. I mean, if you look at these bylaws as they exist, they're basic. I mean, they're the kind of things you would do in your own home as an owner. You would certainly do it if you were renting in any other location yourself. I'm sure all of us have rented Airbnb and VRBO and other locations, and you would expect these very basic things to be there. And certainly, anybody in the neighborhood would want that as well. But even you as an owner would certainly automatically do these things. There isn't one thing in that whole thing that is in any way unusual with a homeowner's maintenance of their property.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes.
Beth Carlson, South Street, Stockbridge. I just am questioning the efficacy of this when you cut down to the penalties. These are, in light of the profits being made, these penalties, I think, will be ineffective.
Remember that this gives us the option of non-renewal of registration, which is a fairly large penalty, you know, if someone's a multiple offender. So we do have some options to follow the subsequent year to, you know, use the stick bread and the carrot.
Thank you. Dr. Kenny.
Charlie Kenny, Board of Health. Earlier, one of the gentlemen referred to a property that's been a chronic nuisance for the Tri-Town Health Department and the Board of Health. Can you speak to any specific remedies in this bylaw that answered that gentleman's concerns?
Well, there's the ability to evaluate and fine and not renew, and non-renewal the subsequent year. This is an annual renewal, annual registration process. So the Select Board will have the option to not renew a registration if someone is found to be a chronic violator. You know, and this was worked inexpensively with Town Council. There are a number of limitations, you know, to what can be achieved, but we felt this was the best way to introduce regulation into the industry for the town.
Okay. There being no further comments, I will now call for a vote. And the voting is now open. One is yes, two is no. This is me. Yeah. The yeses have it 120 to 11. Article 52. Now, Article 52, 53, Articles 52, 53, and 54, being all amendments to the zoning bylaw, require a 2/3 majority.
Okay. Article 52. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws Table of Use Regulation 4.1.1A, principal uses by amending Section 4.11.1, sorry, correction, Table of Use Regulation 4.11A, principal uses by amending Section 4.11.1 and 4.11.2 as set forth in the warrant Article 52.
Is there a second? Second. Is there any comment, questions? Kate.
Yeah, question for Town Council. Donna, are existing residential properties in the business district that are currently being used as residential on the ground floor, are they exempt from this change?
Yeah. Oh, please, I'm sorry. Since the question was posed to you.
Yeah, I wait for you, though. Donna Brewer, Town Council. Any existing uses for residences on the ground floor will be deemed prior non-conforming existing uses and will be protected so long as that use continues. That use can be extinguished by non-use.
Okay. I guess I would recommend that we include that wording in this bylaw change and that we also include more flexibility such that a property in the business district on the ground floor doesn't sit empty for years because they can't find a commercial tenant. And I'd like to make an amendment to that purpose.
That's fine, Kate. We'll need it in writing, which I assumed you had. I knew it. Thank you. So I'm -- I just want Town Council to look at this first, okay? Is there a second on this, to this motion, to amend? Would it help if the motion were read again?
I haven't read it.
I think so, yeah.
I haven't read it yet, so I will read it. So this applies, I'm not reading it yet, but I'm just explaining, this applies to the business district. We currently have residential properties that are residential on the ground floor in the business district on Pine Street, Shamrock Street, Elm Street, I'm not sure about Maple Street, Laurel Lane. So I will now read the amendment. So this is the table of uses, and as presented to you here, there's an asterisk with a note, and I would be adding two notes, which I'll read now. One-family and two-family properties existing as a residential use as of June 12, 2021 are permitted as of right for residential use in perpetuity. Three, if after an eight-month period that includes a reasonable effort to rent or sell a space, a property owner is not able to find a suitable commercial tenant or buyer, said property can be used or sold as a residential dwelling. A reasonable effort shall include notifying the Stockbridge Select Board and Stockbridge Chamber of Commerce and advertising the space in a generally accepted publication for commercial space.
Thank you. I've asked Donna to --
Was it seconded?
It was seconded. Yes.
And you're opening up discussion?
Yeah, I am. I'm sorry. Pardon me.
Okay. Sorry, Donna Brewer, Town Council. So I want to point out a couple of things so that the voters know what you're voting on. It's a little bit complicated, so not having it in front of you, I'll try to summarize it for you. It makes a couple of changes. You might recall that I mentioned that if it currently exists as a residential use, that it could be extinguished as a residential use in the business district if it is not used as a residence for a certain period of time, generally two years. This will permit that property's residential use to be protected in perpetuity. So it could not, it could be used now as a residence, used for 10 years as a commercial space. It does not lose its right to go back to being a residential use. The second thing I want to make sure everybody understands is that it's talking about trying to take space in the business district to be rented commercially, but if after eight months they're unable to find a commercial tenant, then it can be rented out for residential use. So it can actually convert current commercial space to residential space. This amendment is not just protecting current residential uses. It could allow the conversion of current commercial use into residential use.
But it doesn't preclude that the space be used as commercial?
Correct, but it only gives, it only provides or only requires an eight-month time period by which to try to find a commercial tenant. And if after that eight months is expired, then they can convert it to residential use. So it's just creating a new potential residential use in the business district.
Right. And I believe it adds flexibility where flexibility has been lost in this change.
That's fine.
Hi. I just wanted to let everybody know what the purpose and what the stimulus was for this particular bylaw change. And that was when we had, if everyone recalls, many properties in our main commercial district, which is tiny, were on the market. And we realized that at street level, that we had no bylaw to say you couldn't turn a commercial business property, what's been traditionally a business commercial property. You couldn't just buy that property and then turn it into a residence. And so there was some concern because we have such a limited commercial area downtown. So there was some thought that we really need to protect that. We don't want to lose all of our commercial properties downtown on the first floor. Second floor can be residential. And again, as Donna explained, it does not change that ability to have within the business district, those places that a residence is now, entire house or second floor, it does not change that.
Thank you. Is there any other comment on this? Yes. Mr. Seltzer.
Richard Seltzer, 88 Interlakeen Road. I'm concerned about losing our commercial district. I think it's a very small commercial district, and it's on life support if we lose pieces of it. The eight-month requirement saying that if somebody cannot find a new commercial user within eight months.
Richard, I'm going to interrupt you. This is, again, a discussion on the amendment only, not on the main. Am I in the wrong place? It's in the, excuse me. I should never rely upon memory. Sorry about that.
May I continue?
Thank you. I'm sorry. Stand corrected.
The eight-month stipulation has a serious flaw in it because it doesn't prevent the owner from putting an unrealistically high price on the property, and after eight months, nobody comes and bids the unrealistically high price, and then the owner can convert it to residential, frustrating the very purpose for which the Chair of the Select Board said the amendment was intended.
Thank you. Any other comment on the -- Gary?
Hi, Gary Pitney, Church Street. I'm on the planning board, and I would encourage you not to vote for the amendment. I think it's important to protect the downtown, and I think with the interest in housing, I think it could be a real issue for us if we don't protect the bottom floors of the business district.
Thank you. Are there any other comments on the amendment? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote on the amendment. It's open now. One for, two opposed. Okay. I'm advised to remind you again that the vote is a 2/3 vote because it is an amendment to the zoning bylaw. 2/3 on the main motion, not on the amendment. Okay. The nays have it, 114 to 9. We're now returning to the main motion. And if there are any comments, please come forward.
Hi, Anne Obershinois.
The microphone will actually pick you up. You don't have to stand on your toes.
Okay. Sergeant Street. This is about the, I unfortunately don't know exactly what's on, I'm in Sergeant Street. Anyway, would a one-family dwelling on an existing lot smaller than the minimum, could a second unit be added if all other standards are met? We have a house that's 2,300, I mean, I'm just going to explain the thing. We have a house that's too big for us, and we could put, without changing the exterior of the building or doing anything like that, put a kitchen in upstairs and have a friend, actually, who would like to rent from us. But right now, we can't do that. So, I mean, it's a very specific thing, but that's sort of a question.
Well, unfortunately, your question really is not pertinent to the matter at hand. It's going to be, that's a zoning issue, and so basically I would be checking with the building inspector to see what your rights are.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no other questions, we will now, well, there is one.
Yes, there is.
Kate. Please.
Question for Donna. Donna, how do you define ground floor, and is that a definition that needs to be included in our zoning? in our zoning bylaw?
Donna Brewer, Town Council. I don't think we need to include the definition. It may already be in the building code, we could ask the building inspector that, but as well, if something is not defined in a statute or bylaw, the courts will look at the ordinary layperson's understanding of it, and I think most of us have an understanding of what that would be.
Thank you. Hearing no other, or seeing no other hands up or questions, we're going to proceed to vote. Again, a reminder, on the main motion, the vote must carry by two-thirds majority. And we're open now to vote. It is approved ninety-six to twenty-seven, which is seventy-eight percent. Thank you. Passed. Next, Article 53, Patrick.
I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws Section 6.16 driveway and common driveway by amending Section 6.16.1 as set forth in the warrant Article 53.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this? Well, seeing none, hearing none, we will proceed to vote, remember it. Thank you.
Denny Elsop, Main Street. Thank you for recognizing my delayed raised hand, Mr. Moderator. I'm in B, we're talking about the maximum length of any driveway, driveway shall not exceed 500 feet from the edge of the street or road, provided however that a driveway exceeding 500 feet may be approved by special permit if a greater length is necessitated by topography or special conditions, which may include conservation, scenic landscape, or agricultural considerations. Could a member from the planning board help me understand the intent behind scenic landscape? Is that an opening for a landowner to request a longer driveway because they want a view? Or is scenic landscape for the benefit of the public to prevent building a longer driveway and putting a house on an interview?
Are you able to respond to this? No, but are you able to respond to this?
No, I don't.
Okay. Is there a member of the planning board who can? The Chair of the planning board is...
I'm here.
Not here.
I'm a member of the planning board, I'd be happy to respond.
Is there a vice chair?
I'd like to respond, if I may.
Oh, okay. Kate, please.
I know you're sick of me, Steve, sorry. So, it's weak wording, I will grant you that, and the intent was that a 500, a driveway exceeding 500 feet was for a public good, that would include conservation, a viewscape, or agricultural considerations. And that was the intention of that wording.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Mark Lee.
Would you step a little bit, just step a little bit closer?
Mark Lee, on Prospect Hill Road, I have two questions. What's the definition of a new driveway? Does that include repaving an old driveway or extending an old driveway?
It's a brand-new driveway, it's not a repaving.
And what's the definition, this is going to be a weird one. What's the definition of a driveway of 500 feet? I live in a condominium, and our driveways well exceed 500 feet.
It's existing, though, isn't it?
It's existing.
Right, so the way it's been for a long while, as I understand it, is that if a property owner, developer wants to propose a longer driveway, they come in and they apply for a special permit. Otherwise, by right, if it's less than 500 feet, you can put in the driveway. You would know, you're a lawyer.
Not today, I'm not.
Okay, so anything that's already existing and being modified or repaved is grandfather, is that correct? Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have something new to add to your comment? I'm just asking you the question. Do you have something new to add?
May I?
Do you have something new?
Would an amendment be something new?
It certainly would be.
Okay. To change 6.16.1, Section B, to read, "The maximum length of any driveway shall not exceed 500 feet, comma, measured from the edge of the surface of the street or road, provided however that a driveway exceeding 500 feet may be approved by special permit if a greater length is necessitated by topography or special conditions with the addition of the phrase 'for a public good,' which may include conservation, scenic landscape, or agricultural consideration."
So, again, I just want to understand, the motion is just simply to add the phrase "for the public good"?
Yes, after or special conditions.
Yes, I understand, okay. Can you have the text, please? It's fine, Denny. No, that's okay, that's fine, that's okay. Are you good at origami, too? Special conditions, right here, "for a public good," which may include, okay. Thank you. The motion's been seconded, by the way. Okay. If there's no further comment on the, or if there's no comment, I should say, on the motion to amend, we will proceed to vote. The vote for the motion to amend is a majority vote only. Seeing none, we're going to proceed to vote. Voting is open, one yes on the motion, two no. The motion passes seventy to forty-eight. We will now proceed to the main motion. If there's no, if there's no comment, we can proceed to vote. This is a vote requiring a two-thirds majority. Mr. Seltzer.
Richard Seltzer, 88 Interlake and Road. The bylaw specifies driveways that are up to 500 feet. If somebody buys a piece of property and the house is 700 feet from the road, does that mean the driveway ends before the house and they have to walk the last 200 feet?
Richard, the house wouldn't not exist if there wasn't already a driveway.
No, what if it's a new?
Well, a new house, they have to come and get a special permit because years ago, the town decided that if you had a driveway, present a driveway over 500 feet, it wasn't going to be by right, and it was going to be by special permit. We're not changing that. That is, that is the way it's been for a long, long time, and generally, those special permits have been granted. If reasonable people come and say, "Look at my, my house needs to be down there, and you know, the road is up here," but it is a special permit.
But under the language that you're proposing, you'd have to show that there was something in the topography.
It says "may include," I believe. It says, "may be approved by special permit or special conditions which may include." It may include others, but it may include conservation, scenic landscape, or agricultural considerations.
So if the house is 700 feet from the road, and that's where the person intends to build his house, because it's a lot that permits that, and why should that person have to get a special permit to have a driveway that goes back to his house?
Well, they do right now, right now, Richard. The bylaw, the existing bylaws requires that right now.
I'm opposed to augmenting that rule. I think that it's intrusive, and a house that's 700 feet from the road needs to have a driveway that's 700 feet without a special permit.
I think you've made your point, thank you very much. Are there any other comments on this bylaw? Kate?
Kate, yeah, I'll just make the point that what we're talking about, the change we're talking about here is requiring in new construction that the properties have, provide two off-street parking spaces. That's the change that we're looking at here today. There's no change to, Richard, the Section B that you just described, that has been on the books for quite a while, and actually, Steve, I think you were on the Select Board when that was, when that was proposed, and I think you might have had something to do with it, if I recall correctly.
Thank you. Any other comments? We're going to proceed to vote, two-thirds vote. One in favor, two against. The motion has carried 100 to 16, it's a vote. Again, I know this is difficult. Please stay, our vote count is going down. I may be going down here shortly, too. Down for the count. Article 54.
You're leaving, you're losing your crowd. I move that the town amend the zoning bylaws Section 6.2, off-street parking requirements by amending Section 6.2.1 to 6.2.6 as set forth in the warrant Article 54.
Is there a second? Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any comment on the motion? You, sir.
Hi, Tom Finney from Rattle State Mountain Road. It might help speed things along if you explain to us what's been changed from the old bylaw. I said it may speed things along if you explain what's been changed from the old bylaw. We just spent a half an hour talking about something that wasn't being changed.
The business district, no off-street parking spaces are required for settlements with the, within the business zoning district. As right now, they have to have required parking spaces. As you know, we don't have any parking in town, so one of the reasons you can't fill these empty spaces is because they can't meet the parking. So we're eliminating that, but we're not eliminating all the stuff for the ends and the stuff like that. So all it's doing is eliminating requirements for off-street parking for businesses on the business district.
Any other questions? Dr. Kenny?
Yes, I'd like to ask a question about what happens to, let's assume we take a business in town that right now has required parking spaces, and now we change it so that that particular place doesn't, let's say it would be Michael's, for example, it has parking spaces, and let's say that those parking places are no longer required for Michael's, could those parking places then be sold and used for a building and eliminate the parking that's available downtown for the rest of us?
The answer is yes. The answer is yes.
Well, that's probably your property that the town has, don't say that they can do anytime that they want, that's their property. It's their property.
Okay, are there any other comments on this? Hearing, Kate, are you going to offer something new? This is, this becomes an issue. Please.
Well, I'll defer, Patrick had his hand up, so I will defer to him if he would prefer.
Okay, go ahead.
Oh, go ahead. I'd just like to point out that my understanding of this is that if this change goes through, that if the Red Line Inn and Michael's decide to build out, that the town now has a parking, a bigger parking problem than it had before.
Thank you. If there's no other comments, we're going to proceed to vote. Again, this is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, it requires a two-thirds vote. The voting is open. The motion fails. The vote is fifty-six to fifty-three. Okay, so ordinarily, at this point, we'd be over, except we're going back to seven. And now, at Article seven, you will recall, some hours ago, I told Dr. Kenny that it would be an appropriate time to bring his motion forward, and this gets a little bit complicated, but Dr. Kenny, if you want to stand up and make your motion, then we'll... Hold on. Here you go. I want this back, or you've got to give me that back, I need it, okay? Oh. Yeah, but this is the motion I wanted to make. Charlie?
Charlie?
Charlie, can I see you, please? You can explain what you're doing, okay? But this is the, in order to make sense out of this, this is the way you have to frame your motions. You can give an introduction, okay, if you would, but this is the way in which we get to consolidate all of these articles.
Well, I don't intend to consolidate the articles. I can be concerned, you see, the reading of the articles in the town means it's an option, it doesn't have to be done.
That's correct. Ah, so you don't want to consolidate them?
No, I do not.
That's fine, that's fine, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. Okay, Dr. Kenny?
Okay, the, in the interest of expediency... The, in the interest of expediency, and I think this will help us all to get through this day, just to remind everybody that the, the reading of articles on the warrant is an option and does not have to be done. I'm recommending by my amendment, or by my suggestion, my motion, simply a method of improving and speeding up the reading of all of these articles. So I would like to move that for Articles 7 through 20, that we make the reading limited so that the phrase, "to see if the town will vote," as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, "to appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance the sum of," that phrase be only stated once and not be repeated. And secondly, I would like to have, unless there's some specific objection to a certain part of the, these articles, that we vote, that we debate and vote on these articles at the end of the reading of all of them.
Okay. Donna, I think we need to have a little discussion about this. Because it sounds to me as if what the motion is asking us to do is a kind of backdoor consolidation of all of the articles. And that is not going to work without a, and I'm going to rule this out of order. Not the first part. First part's fine. But the second part, in order to consolidate articles on a warrant, there has to be a specific motion to do it. And that's in a... Yeah, but the, the prob... No, I'm going, I'm going to rule your motion out of order because I think the, the intent, your intent may not be there, but the practical effect is to do that. And in order to do that, if you don't wish to do that, then I want, I would recommend that you withdraw the second part of your motion.
May I see that modification that you made originally?
Okay.
Okay, so this will...
We've, we've now concluded the negotiation over the, over the motion.
Okay, so this will speed this up. I'm going to read the motion, but it will have the effect of doing exactly what I said, to put everything together. And then we debate it and vote on it at the end of everything being read together. And if anyone wishes to remove one of the items, they can, and Steve will bring that up. "I move that the town appropriate or reserve for future appropriation monies from the Community Preservation Fund annual reserves, revenues, specific reserves, or other available funds for the administrative expenses of the Community Preservation Committee, the payment of debt service, the undertaking of community preservation projects, and all other necessary and proper expenses for the year as read by the moderator, accepting those items held with each item to be considered a separate appropriation. And further, that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute agreements on terms acceptable to the Board to the extent necessary to effectuate the public benefits of such project, projects."
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Now, Charlie, can I have that back, please? We need that back. Thank you. That's okay. No, thank you. Okay. Now, before we get started with this, that is with the, if you permit me to make a comment, which the moderator ordinarily doesn't do, I, I just want to tell you that the, the Board of, the Select Board included the, the separate articles on the warrant in the interest of having a, to use their words, a transparent discussion of each one of the awards made by the Community Preservation Committee. It is 1:30 in the afternoon. And a consolidation of the, of these articles, subject to the limitations which I'll go through in a moment, will save us a considerable amount of time. And they have agreed to this. You know, if we hadn't had eight bylaw amendments, we might have been able to do it otherwise. So I will just say that everyone will be permitted to ask for a hold. And by hold, I mean that if, for instance, we were voting on Article 7, for instance, and someone doesn't wish to approve Article 7, they can ask for a hold. And that will not be included in the consolidated vote. There will be a separate vote as to that item. So that, it's a bit of a hybrid, but we get, you know, to the same, to the same position. So if there's any comment other than, than mine, please come forward now. Yes? Thank you, Jay, yes. And as Jay Bykowsky reminds me to say, each one of these has been previously approved by the, by the Select Board as well as by the Finance Committee. So I'm, I'm sorry, Carol, you have to come forward. I can't, I couldn't hear you from there anyway. Yes. Carol Owens, and you live on, yes, I know.
Charlie? It's number 7 through 22.
It is.
Yeah, you kept saying through 20.
No, it's through 22.
Okay, so we have it clear.
Yes, absolutely. No, that's okay. We're just, we have numbers fatigue at this point. Okay. So if there's no further questions or comments, then I will call for a vote on... What? Oh, I have to read them first?
You have to read them first so they can hold.
Excuse me. Point of order.
I think that the reading of the items on a warrant at a town meeting is an option. And I think the moderator has the right to decide if that's a good idea.
I, you know, Donna, that's correct. He is correct. But I can shorten this. Excuse me. I can shorten this to say appropriate $34,000 for the Stockbridge housing...
Or just ask for a hold on number 7, 8, 9.
Why do I have to do that?
No, you say, is there a hold?
Oh, okay. Yes, I will do that right now. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. The purpose of, of enumerating each of these articles from the podium is in order to give people the opportunity to exercise their right to a hold. So what I will do then is just simply say... Article, you, does everyone have their warrant? Okay. So I will say, Article 7, is there anyone wishing to hold? No. Article 8, is there anyone wishing to hold? No. Article 9, is there anyone wishing to hold? No. Article 10, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 11, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 12, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 13, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 14, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 15, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 16, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 17, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 18, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 19, is there anyone wishing to hold? Article 20? Article 20, you're requesting that it be held? Article 20 will be held. Article 21, is there anyone wishing to hold? Are you okay? Well, 22, we have to hold. Yeah. Article 22 will be held. Okay. Now... Yeah, okay, I'll do that. All right. I mean, there, there is an option here with respect to the non-held items. We can have discussion on each one of them. On the other hand, I can call for a vote on the non-held items right now. So I, I, from the groans and, and the audience, my sense of it is that we don't need to click until we get to the, to the motion itself. So I'm going to call for a vote on, this is on Article 7 through 19 and Article 21. Is that correct? Thank you. Okay. All right. So it's only those to the non, the non-held items which are Articles 20 and 22. Are you ready? Okay. It's open for a vote. Majority vote. The eyes have it 109 to 5. And now we have discussion as to Articles 20. Let's start with Article 20.
There's really no discussion. The, the language omitted the word affordable. And so I'm going to read it with the word affordable inserted. There's no need for an amendment. I just have to read it out loud for it to be legal according to our esteemed lawyer. Article 20, "I move that the town, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, appropriate from the Community Preservation Undesignated Fund balance a sum of $100,000 for community housing purposes to be used by the Town of Stockbridge for the funding of the Stockbridge Affordable Housing Trust, provided, however, that such appropriation shall be contingent on the development approval by town meeting of a Stockbridge Housing Trust." Want me to add it both times? Stockbridge Affordable Housing Trust. Thank you.
Okay. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. One eye, two no. Oh, hold on. Not just this moment. All set. Thank you, proud Trump. The eyes have it 99 to 10. We'll now move on to, to... I'm sorry. That was someone wishing to make a motion to amend. But it was coming from Brooklyn, so I couldn't respond to it. Sorry. Roxanne, please.
Okay. Article 22. "I move that the town reserve, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee and pursuant to the Community Preservation Act, $28,000 from estimated annual revenues to each of the following reserves: the Historic Resources Reserve, the Affordable Housing Reserve, and the Open Space Reserve from Community Preservation as required by Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 6."
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any, are there any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none, I, now, are we ready? Ready for the vote? The motion's carried 111 to 4. Article 23.
"I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $40,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of contracting for professional services to provide planning and zoning-related assistance to the Town of Stockbridge Planning Board." And I would like to add that the majority of the Select Board and unanimously the Finance Committee have approved of this.
There's a second. Is there any discussion on this motion? Yes. Charlie, not, not, not just yet. There's someone back here.
Me?
Go right ahead.
Anita Schwerner, Lake Drive. Okay, I would ask the town to vote no on $40,000 for the consultants. This past year, the town already had provided $40,000 for consultants. Lacy and Erin have stated publicly that they were finished with the draft bylaw, their sixth version of the draft bylaw. They've done public presentations. And what's interesting is that at Planning Board meetings, there are members who have stated that they really don't know what the other Planning Board members feel about these things or even what these, the, the details of the bylaw mean, how they impact the town. So it seems like at this point, the Planning Board should be doing the work. They should be holding meetings. The Planning Board members should decide on the details. They have rejected a lot of the details that the consultants have come up with. Some of them want more density, some of them want less. This isn't about the specific bylaw. This is about $40,000 more for consultants. And the consultants are no longer needed at this point. If there are other things that come up that require consultants, then the Planning Board can go to the Select Board, I believe, and ask for money to be provided for those things. But at this point, I would ask you to vote no.
Thank you. Any other comments? Dr. Kenny?
Yes. I'd, I'd like to ask everybody to vote no for this because I think the Planning Board has been going in the wrong direction and putting the cart before the horse. The Planning Board has ignored, basically, the input from many people in town who have points of view that I think are worthy of, of hearing. And instead brought in a stranger, strangers from outside of town who've really, basically, taken boilerplate bylaws changes from the Town of Lyden and moved them into Stockbridge, after these people have come for a few days at the most to see our town. We need to have much more respect for the views, even if they're a minority view, of the people who already live in town. And that, for that reason, you should vote no, I believe. And I would ask you to do that because I think this is, is not at all a good allocation.
Thank you. Again, we need to be somewhat careful about... Again, we need to be somewhat careful about making comments about other people. Mr. Mills?
Thank you, Steve. Mark Mills, fifteen Cherry Street, Stockbridge. As some of you know, I ran unsuccessfully for a seat on the planning board this spring. Uh, and in the course of the campaign, I did attend via Zoom a number of the planning board meetings. Learned a lot about the process and the people and how it works. And it was very educational, even though the campaign wasn't successful. But I can tell you that after seeing these consultants working with the board and looking at the zoning bylaw change that is under consideration by the planning board right now, I think they need the expert help that the consultants provide. These are very complex pieces of legislation. The draft number six is available on the town website right now. If you read it, seven pages of it, pretty dense language, dealing with some complex planning matters, I think you would agree that to expect an average board of seven citizens to be able to write this kind of language and write this kind of a law would be very difficult. It's very important that a zoning bylaw conformed to state law, that it considers many variables that can come up in the process of land being developed, and that it be written in such a way that it can withstand legal challenges down the road that could be very expensive if a piece of legislation isn't drafted properly. I think opponents to this funding for the consultants, from what I can tell, are against the bylaw that they're being, that they're being worked on. So it makes sense that if you're against a bylaw that the consultants are helping to draft, that you're not going to vote for their money because you don't want what they're doing to even see the light of day. If the zoning board ultimately, excuse me, if the planning board ultimately passes this zoning bylaw, then there will be public hearings. People will get to see and hear about it and learn about it. There will be a future vote of the town meeting to decide whether to accept it or not. The planning board voted five to two to request this funding. So certainly a majority there felt we need the funding. There are other issues coming up in the coming year besides the particular zoning law that they've been working on that are going to require some expert help. The Select Board voted two to one in favor of this. And the Finance Committee approved this as well. So I urge you to give your planning board what they need to do their job properly and produce the kind of legislation that we can be proud of. And that may be on the books for years to come. They need your help back this measure.
Thank you. Mr. Bykowski?
Jay Bykowski, Larua Crossroad. The point that I would make, folks, is that this is not a mandate to spend $40,000. What we're saying here is we need to give our elected planning board the tools to do the job and let them decide the extent and the type of consultation they require to come up with a transparent presentation to our citizenry. So we're giving them the tools to do the job. We're not, we're not saying you've got to spend the money or perhaps you don't need to spend the money. But we really can't, we can't have elected officials without the resources to bring transparency to the population of Stock, Stockbridge.
Thank you. Marie?
Well, in my notes, I had put down, I was going to say, "Good morning." I hope I don't have to say, "Good evening." Anyway.
If the rate were going, Marie, it may be.
Well, that's what I was afraid of. I am Marie Rafftry, forty East Street, and a member of the planning board. I urge you to vote in favor of this article. This past year, the planning board in the town has contracted with a professional planner from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission to help rewrite and clarify several of the bylaws that you already passed today. He updated them. He wrote them. We also hired a well-known planner, Jeff Lacy, to help us craft a Natural Resources Protection zoning bylaw, which is still in the draft phase. Uh, it needs to be completed, and this needs to be brought to the town for approval. So that still needs to be done. All bylaws are complex in scope and language. We have certainly benefited from the advice, expertise, and legal knowledge of these planners. And there's a lot more still to do. As you know, the planning board and Select Board are just people in town who are willing to volunteer their time and best efforts to help govern the town. We're all people like you. Many of us on other boards, many of you guys are on, uh, town boards now. We're not planners, we're not lawyers. We don't know how to write complex laws that will pass muster with the Attorney General using correct language and addressing loopholes and legal concerns. Our planner from Berkshire Regional Planning Commission, who helped write the bylaws, the parking, the signage, he consulted with the town attorney and Ned Baldwin, the building inspector, and Mike Canalis. And he tweaked and perfected the bylaws. We don't know how to do that. We're just volunteers with other lives and other jobs. The laws and regulations are more complex each year. This is not a novel idea for towns to hire professional planners for special projects. Many towns around us do. Many also have professional planners on board that are, uh, working full-time. Lennox and Great Barrington have planners. This is money well spent. Just because we've been, just since I've been on the board, we have many more special permits, many more issues. And we have more and more special permits still to come, to be updated. Even Joel Russell, who last year worked for us, has a list of updates that, that need to be, um, done. For example, Phil Arnold's now working on wording for the ADU bylaw, which will come up. As you know, money well spent to do things correctly for the first time, not after there's a problem and we're in trouble and need it then. Thank you for your vote. I urge you to support this, this planner.
Thank you, Marie.
Hi, I don't know, I can't, I'm vertically challenged.
Well, I am too, but the microphone will pick that up.
Okay, very good. My, I'm Laura DeBester, I live in Stockbridge. And I want to say you're not just volunteers, you're volunteers. And that's really important, and I respect and appreciate your work as a volunteer. I think my concerns are that, I know it's, has a lot to do with this current open space bylaw. And the bylaw talks about, uh, three, three, uh, three things. Homeowners, landowners.
Laura, Laura, this is, this is out of order.
No, it's not. I want to make this one point.
You are out of order in discussing the substance of a bylaw that is not before this body.
Okay, I'll talk about it in, in another words. I think before we appropriate money, we need to understand the purpose of a bylaw. And I don't, I'm not yet clear on the purpose of some of these bylaws. I think landowners, I think, um, the environment. I think, uh, developers are all really worth considering. And I think the community needs to be considered as well. And we have dire housing needs in the community. And we need to be thinking creatively about how to address this. And the community has to get involved in identifying the purpose of a bylaw. And then we can talk about the money needs and the consultant needs.
Thank you. Patrick? No applause, please.
Hey, I just wanted to clarify. I was the selectman who voted against, uh, this, uh, this appropriation. Uh, I, I want to emphasize that the planning board is elected, and they have every right to set their own agenda and do their own work. I simply asked for a prioritization of the work that they would be doing and a list of what this money would be appropriated for. I didn't feel like I got it. I also requested that, just like in Lennox and Lee and Great Barrington and North Adams, that the professional planners would primarily be hired by and managed by the professionals at Town Hall. Because I had the sense that there were some things that, you know, we have, we have a professional town administrator and town, and, uh, town council. And between the two of them, we're already spending a quarter million dollars in some really high-powered professional help. And I felt like it should be their call whether to execute the vision of the planning board, that we should leave it up to them as we needed, whether we needed outside expertise. Once again, I got no traction on that proposal. I feel like it's my responsibility to, um, to be the steward of, of, of your money, the taxpayers' money. And so therefore, I voted against them, though it had nothing to do with the agenda or the plans or whatever the vision is of your elected planning board representatives.
Thank you. Nina?
Nina Ryan, Main Street. I want to follow up on what Laura said, which is, I think, before spending any more money on revising on, on the agenda of the planning board, we need to understand, uh, why we need to have our zoning bylaw extensively revised. It seems to work pretty well as it is. And we've had a lot of input from some very good consultants. That we've, I've certainly learned a lot from them. And, uh, and I think we can all see that our, our zoning works. And, um, we're spending an awful lot of money. I, Laura got to the point. What's the purpose of revising all of this?
Thank you. Alan?
I've been here.
You'll get, you'll get your chance. You've had a few already.
I'll be very.
I'd like, I'd like him to have an opportunity to speak.
I'll be very brief. Uh, I'm Alan Hyman, I live in the Town of Stockbridge. Very happy to say this is the first time that I have, although I've lived here for 22 years, this is the first time that I've been eligible to sit amongst you. I'm very pleased and proud. I just would like to support everything that Patrick White said.
Good.
When people say, "It's not the money, it's the money." The money directs what your convictions are. And so when people say, "Well, just allocate $40,000," they already know what their purpose of that, that funding is for. So I, I'm going to vote no, and I urge others to vote no.
Thank you. Kate?
Kate Fletcher, um, I am on the planning board, and I am one of two, uh, board members who voted against this appropriation. We did actually spend $40,000. We had an appropriation of $40,000 last year, and that, to my knowledge, was spent down. I second Patrick's comments as well as Laura's. It was difficult to, uh, we wanted to have a bullet list of priorities. We were not, we asked for that, we were not able to get that. And as a planning board member, um, I'm in full support of transparency, and I found that lacking over the past year. It was often, often difficult to get the information I needed in order to be informed. I would like to make an amendment. I guess, I think this should be voted down. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Tom, are you speaking?
Uh, Tom Stokes. I want to, uh, second the Patrick's comments and the other comments that, uh, I don't think this is a wise expenditure. I am concerned that, uh, as Nina Ryan suggested, we have a lot that's really worked very well for Stockbridge over the years. And two years ago, we had a diagnostic study done of Stockbridge. And essentially, I don't know how many people had a chance to really look at it. But essentially, that document really articulated the things we've done right and why we have, by and large, very good bylaws on zoning in Stockbridge and how they've worked to protect the green entryways of town, worked to keep the central business district in downtown, worked to lessen the amount of sprawl. So sure, it has to be tweaked, but the problem is, is that I, I think this most recent round, and not to point fingers at anybody, didn't really properly take into consideration, uh, A, what the diagnostic study said, which is essentially things are, what's not broken, don't fix it. And essentially, didn't really, uh, have the kind of transparency and respect for what, uh, leadership in past decades have provided for us here at Stockbridge. So I urge a no vote.
Thank you. Your big, oh, pardon me.
Hi, I just wanted to mention that diagnostic study did not say everything was 100% correct. There were some inadequacies or places that we could make improvements were noted in the diagnostic study. Uh, but I would like to point out that we do have an elected Finance Committee. And I think, as Jay very eloquently expressed, uh, we want them to have the tools for them to be able to do their job as well as they can. This particular appropriation isn't a mandate to just go out and spend money. This is to give them the ability to hire the consultants and the resources that they need to do their job effectively. So they may or may not spend this $40,000. We shall see. But it is certainly not a mandate to spend it on one particular thing that apparently there is a lot of controversy over. But the last time I checked, we live in a democracy. We have five planning board members. Who approved of this? Who requested this? We have two out of three selectmen who approved of this. And we had unanimous vote on our Finance Committee approving this. Thank you.
Uh, there's a, a motion to call the question, which takes. Is.
There's a correction needed.
Excuse me again? Sorry?
Finance members are not elected. She said the finance.
You're out of, you're out of order. If you'd like to make, there's been a motion to call the question. That takes priority over everything. And if there's a second to that. Okay, there's been a second to the motion to call the question. We will have discussion on the motion to call the question.
Point of order? Point of order?
Strike. No, there's no, no discussion on the motion. Sorry about that. Thank you. So we're going to proceed to vote on the motion to call the question.
Point of order? You had said at the beginning of the meeting that no calls would be made from the floor. So shouldn't the point of order?
No, I, I, these are calls that I can make, that are within my power to make these calls.
So calling the question can be made from the floor?
The, the motion to call the question will be voted on. If it fails, we will go back to the main motion. Okay? We're going to go back to the main motion, in any event, to vote it up or down. You're out of order.
I'm not out of order.
You're, I love you dearly.
The motion, the motion to, to bring the previous question to a vote cannot, and is specifically stated in town meeting time, cannot be made from the floor. It has to be by an identified person, identified by the moderator that has all of the responsibilities of everybody else in this audience.
Fine, then, then we will do it.
I have a quest, I, I'd like to speak.
Come on, you want to, did you want to call the question? Then stand up and call it. Just a moment, please.
Don Shabon, Lake Drive, I called the question.
Is there a second? Okay. We will now proceed to vote on the motion to call the question. It's a majority vote only. We're open to vote.
I know, but I'm standing here.
Yeah, that way, you're right.
What?
Thank you. Uh, the motion carries eighty-eight to seventeen. We will, we will, we will now, you're out of order. We will now proceed to vote on the main motion. The main motion being the appropriation of $40,000 under article twenty-three. Open to vote. Close, sixty to fifty-four, it is approved. Okay. Sixty to fifty-four. The article carries, article twenty-four.
Point of order?
Point of order? Could I just make a point... Ask for a point of order? I just... Beth Carlson, 9 South Street. Some of us just did not hear the call to vote last... And one of the motions that... So for going forward, can we just make sure that call to vote is really clear? That's all.
Absolutely. Article 24.
I'd make a motion to reconsider, based on what she just said.
Seven.
That was the question to call. That wasn't the vote. It was a question to call. No, but there are questions that need to be answered.
Okay. I think the record will show that there was a motion made to call the question. It was seconded. There was a vote with a tally of 88 to 17 in favor. We then returned to the main motion, and there being no discussion. There cannot be any discussion after the call, after the approval of a motion to call the question. The vote was held, and it was approved.
60 to 54?
60 to 54, and I announced both votes. So I'm not sure what the nature of the question was, but I do not believe that there was any procedure irregularity, and I am moving on to...
Point of order? I have a motion to reconsider. My motion to reconsider must be entertained if it's seconded. And there was a significant potential lapse in the procedure that allowed some people to vote. Some people say they didn't get a chance to vote. So a motion to reconsider has been put before you, and if it's seconded, then it needs to be debated, and we need to have a vote.
I saw people who didn't hear over here.
Excuse me. I can't hear you.
You just... I think it's really hard, when you're up here, to know what it's like to be back here. And you said all those things, but you mumbled them, and a bunch of people on this side couldn't see your face. What? No. You have to be able to hear.
Well...
You have to state them clearly. If you're going to be a decent moderator, people have to be able to be included. This is about inclusion, not about exclusion.
You are now out of order. Thank you.
Point of order? Point of order? Please.
I have been very, very careful.
You have not kept your voice up.
Been very careful about announcing votes, and very clear, and I've had no reaction from anyone in the back of this room.
You had a person stand up and say that she did not know that the vote was being taken. And that's because people couldn't hear it or see it. So why can't we do it again?
You are out of order. We are proceeding to the next part of...
Point of order, Mr. Moderator.
We're going to consider... We're going to consider the motion for reconsideration. Okay?
Mr. Moderator? Point of order, please.
Before we get there, we just need to... There is a motion for reconsideration on the floor, which has been seconded. We will now proceed to vote on the motion to reconsider. And this is the reconsideration of the vote that was just taken under Article 23.
Discussion regarding that motion?
Generally not, on motions to reconsider. Okay? We are going to vote on the motion to reconsider. It just simply will put Article 23 back onto the warrant for further discussion and a vote. All right? So the tabula...
Point of order? I'd like to speak to you, please.
Speak to whom?
Me? The whole town. Let's point out one thing. You called for the vote. The vote on the amendment was 88 to 17. That was 105 total votes. The vote on the motion, on the article itself, was 60 to 54. That's 114 votes. More people voted for the motion. Let's get that clear.
Jim, Jim, look at it. The motion for reconsideration has to be heard. Period. The motion... You're out of order. No, it's not good. Okay. So there is, again, a motion for reconsideration of the vote on Article 23. There... It has been seconded. There is to be no discussion. The... Are we open? Voting is open. It's a motion for reconsideration of Article 23, which just brings us back to Article 23. Back to the main motion. Article 24.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $35,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of water testing and consultants for the Stockbridge Bowl.
Is there a second? Second, is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Polls are open. Article 25.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $50,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of funding the other post-retirement benefit trust as OPEC.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, we will proceed to vote. Open. The eyes have it 87 to 5. We are going to move on to Article 26, and Terry Amalini is going to act as a temporary moderator, since I have some interest in this article.
Article 26. I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $35,000 from available certified free cash to be added to the amounts appropriated under Article 24 of the annual town meeting of May 20, 2013, Article 22 of the annual town meeting of May 19, 2014, Article 36 of the annual town meeting of May 18, 2015, Article 25 of the annual town meeting of May 16, 2016, Article 20 of the annual town meeting of May 15, 2017, Article 21 of the annual town meeting of May 21, 2018, and Article 14 of the annual town meeting of May 20, 2019, for costs associated with negotiations for the Rest of River Project, along with Pittsfield, Lennox, Lee, Great Barrington, and Sheffield, regarding the removal of PCBs in the Housetonic River.
Yes, may I speak? Danny Alsop, Main Street. The river runs through the county, and it runs through all of us. It is what... It is water. We are water. It defines our landscape. It defines our health. It runs behind our neighborhoods, invisible to many. It runs below our bridges, but it's a place that is enormously important to this region and to this town. I noticed, standing behind me, Tom Stokes, who has dedicated a great deal of his life to the river. And I've worked on the river as well myself. I've canoe'd twice to Boston for the river, each time taking about a month and talking to people along the river. And I think that the first place that I... In 1988, when I was coming up the river from the Green River, and I got to the mill in Housetonic, and the mill workers came out, and they said, "You know, we're going to help you lift your canoe over the dam, because we support you." And then when I got to the sewage treatment plants in Lennox and Pittsfield, they... Workers came out, and I discovered that these were the people who knew more about the river than I did. And that was an eye-opener for me. And I think that my appreciation for the people of this valley grew on those two journeys. And at the moment, I feel that our neighbor upstream is involved in a lawsuit. Many citizens of Lee are unhappy with the fact that the actions which have transpired over the last years have resulted in the sighting of a 20-acre PCB landfill on their northern border with the town of Lennox. And I think the most damning... Oh, bad use of words. Thing about that landfill is that it's sited on a bedrock geology that could leak. And I think there are concerns that in 50 or 100 years, that landfill could leak and influence the future of their town. I think it's valid. So I want... I'm here to serve witness to the many people who have suffered in Pittsfield and down the river from that pollution. And I'm here to serve witness for the future generations of people of this valley who rely upon us today, to perhaps serve witness as a town that a river runs through us. And I urge a vote of no on this. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
My comment is...
Can you identify yourself, please?
Thank you, Terry. Tom Stokes. I live in Stockbridge. And as Denny so eloquently spoke, the river means a lot to so many of us. The one thing that I would like to bring up, and this is not urging people to vote yea or nay on this article, but it's the issue of transparency on the negotiations. And I would actually like to call on Steve Schatz to address that issue to us, and to suggest a forum where we might be better informed about the rationale behind that agreement that's being challenged in other towns, so that we can have a better sense of the logic behind it, and why the people who settled on it decided this was the best of all alternatives. I think we need more information about this, and I would like to frankly say that a vote in favor of these funds should be tied to a request for that kind of information.
Tom, we... First of all, obviously, the town has already signed a contract in favor of the plan. Beyond that, I would fully support a public briefing of the executive session briefing that we had on this, but I don't really think that is the relevant question in front of us. You know, we've got a need to participate in legal procedures that require a specialized counsel, which we have, and that's what this $35,000 is for. It's relatively narrow. So I honestly feel like there... We should be completely transparent, but, you know, that we're not, in my opinion, in a position to deny the town the ability to participate in legal proceedings surrounding this issue.
Well, we have a stake in this, and I think we have a right for more information than we've had, and I would appreciate the response I requested.
Tom, it's going to be difficult to respond to every one of the points, but I'll just... I will just say this. I have Georgia Marsden to blame for the fact that I've spent eight years working on what is called the Rest of the River Committee, but I've now called the Rest of My Life Committee. The... We have done public briefings. We've done public briefings in Lee. We've done them in Lennox, rather large ones, in fact. Sometimes unpleasant to attend, I have to tell you.
Excuse me, but those briefings were prior during the process?
They were, to be sure, during the process, but they were designed to give people the opportunity to make comments about the...
I understand.
The revised... You know, the revised permit.
But what I'm asking for is...
It's very difficult. Look, I could spend hours here going through this. I don't... I'm not going to do it. This is... The town is supported, as has every other town, including, I might add, Pittsfield, the Audubon Society, and the State of Connecticut, and other stakeholders along the river have supported this effort now since 2013. The current status of the special permit, the revised permit, excuse me, is that it sits in a board in Washington called the Environmental Appeals Board. Our town, along with Lee, for the moment at least, Lennox, Pittsfield, Sheffield, and Great Barrington, are not parties to the litigation. We've never been parties to the litigation. We are just simply sort of friends of the court, sometimes called amicus. And the... We are coming very close to a final resolution of the proceedings in the Environmental Appeals Board. I have no idea what's going to happen. It's not inconceivable that the EAB could toss out the revised permit. That may happen. There are opponents, and I understand the nature of the opposition. I mean, it's not... This has been a very difficult process for everyone who has worked on this committee. We've looked at the river as essentially an unregulated toxic waste dump, which it is. There's PCB contamination both in the sediments, and in the bank, and in the vernal pools, and the backwater areas. There are PCB-contaminated sediments sitting behind dams in... There are PCB-contaminated sediments sitting behind dams in Lee primarily. And if any of those dams were to be breached, we would have those sediments where? In the floodplain in Stockbridge. And I'm just speaking about, you know, the Stockbridge concerns. I mean, I can't speak about Rising Pond, and I can't speak about, you know, the Lennox concerns for Woods Pond and so forth. And that is a source of concern for me. It's what has motivated me to stick it out for the last, you know, eight years. I understand, you know, what Denny is saying. I appreciate it. And I know people feel very strongly about essentially doing nothing. But that is always an alternative. In my mind, it is not an acceptable alternative. In the past, the town, I mean, I have been very careful, scrupulous, about advising the Stockbridge Select Board. I've done... I've offered briefings, done briefings. It's in the middle of litigation, so it's not so easy to do this in public, as you know. You're aware of that, having served on a select board. We are just simply asking for a $35,000 appropriation to continue the work of the Rest of the River Committee, period. As just to continuing, to continue our funding of it in order to be able to avoid what we regard as potential adverse consequences for this town. And I might add, as part of the settlement with General Electric, the town will also receive approximately $1.5 million to be used at the discretion of the town meeting. One hopes for some environmentally friendly project. So that's all I have to say today. I'm not in a position... You have to understand, Tom, that because this remains in a litigation posture, it is very difficult for me to answer specific questions without compromising the open-meeting law exceptions that I... that we operate under.
So I respect and I understand everything you've just said, Steve. I've listened closely to you. I do feel that... I do feel that we in Stockbridge, and I'm not talking about a regional meeting, but supporting this effort, that we should have a chance of a full briefing. And I have recognized some things can't be done because of the lawsuits and what have you, but I think there is an opportunity to here, to have a briefing in this room that is really focused on the rest of the river. And we should have a chance for candid interchange and respectful...
Tom, within the limits, you know, that I've just laid out, I'm happy to do it. I've always... And I've always been open to doing that.
Well, I've... Others have asked. I know a couple of years ago...
If you want to arrange for it, I'll show up.
Thank you.
You bet.
The request is really the Select Board to host this meeting. Thank you.
Steve Miller to Elm Street. I'd just like to remind the audience that we're here to vote on appropriation for paying for this project, not the validity of the project. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah. Kate Fletcher. I would just like to ask, to Tom's point and others' point, that as part of any kind of community outreach, I know that the river was, of course, enormously important to Native Americans. We have Bonnie Hartley here from the Mohican Nation, and I think it would be, if it hasn't been done, I would love to see those stakeholders included in community conversations.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, it's time to vote. Vote one for yes and two for no. The article passes 87 to 14.
Okay. Article 27.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $70,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of tree monitoring and treatment within Ice Glen.
Am I up?
Excuse me. Pardon me. Was there a second? Was there a second? Excuse me. Still recovering. I am tired. Is there any discussion on this motion?
There is. Louise Gachet, 39 Church Street.
Please identify yourself.
As I just did. Louise Gachet, 39 Church Street. Patrick, can you flesh this out a little bit? The treatment aspect, I would very much like to understand and comment on once I've heard your statement.
Okay. Briefly, you said? All right. Look, in February, three experts on old growth forests accompanied me up the... up Ice Glen to take a look at the health of the hemlocks and the ash trees. We have three, some estimates are up to 500-year-old trees up there. Trees that were there and quite fully grown when John Sargent was living here, torn them for the first time with Bonnie's ancestors. The fact of the matter is, anybody who followed the herbicide debate knows that many in this town are not friends of herbicides, or, I'm sorry, pesticides. And yet, what the experts are telling us is that in the absence of treating these trees, most of them will die in the next two to three years. These trees have been there for the entire history of the town, and so I am supporting this article to try to save as many as we can.
What is the treatment, though, Patrick?
The treatment is a pesticide called Dynatefaron, and the reason why is the only one that Ken Gujar, our expert, says will treat the black-scale beetle, which is one invasive insect, and the woolly adelgid, which is another invasive insect, and effectively kill those. Now, look, we can decide to let them die, but we're going to also have a tremendous expense to take them down because you cannot have a whole bunch of dead trees along the trail. This is money that would actually save the town money rather than cleaning up a whole bunch of dead trees at Ice Glen.
Yep, so...
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Can I comment now that I've heard? The woolly adelgid, like the bear, is here to stay, and any treatment is going to be a... need a subsequent treatment and a treatment after that. And I strongly oppose the use of pesticides in the Ice Glen or indeed anywhere else in Stockbridge.
Just from a financial point of view, Louise, we believe we can get USDA entomology funding for future year's treatments. The deadline to apply for this year was October of last year. So this is an appropriation where we need to use funds to save these trees now from the town, and in the future, we don't plan to do so. And you have an absolutely reasonable position. If you would rather see the trees die than apply a pesticide, then vote against this appropriation. But that is really what this comes down to.
Yeah, and the loss of trees is going to be a devastating one, but the adelgid is here to stay.
Okay. Leonel.
Lionel Delavare, Seven Wheat Lid Drive, Stockbridge. Again, this was a very good comment that I just heard, and I would reinforce that. It's about chemicals, chemicals, and chemicals again from the Stockbridge ball too. Two, and I would number quite a few places. Now, I have an issue with what started this whole thing. It was a... It was very well done, to some extent, in the Berkshire Eagle. And Patrick just mentioned the three persons interviewed there, the three... Well, two of them, of course, represent the industry that would... Yes. I investigated, and this is what I found out. So that's... These are parties of interest, and I do mind that. I smell fish. And it's not the first time, you know, that, oh, let's not talk poorly about our neighbors. However, is this the time to spend that sort of money? That's a lot of money for consultants, again. I think the process has been expeditious, and we need more time to figure out what science can say. And there are a number of articles, by the way, if you research them, that are negative to the use of those chemicals. So again, why don't we use the money to help the student debt? You know, it's big. It's a reality. The local businesses that have suffered through COVID, Wi-Fi in town, and so forth. So money well appropriated, I beg to defer. Please vote no.
Thank you. Another comment. Shelby.
Shelby Marshall, Cherry Hill Road. I think it's important for people to understand what this treatment is. It is a chemical that is injected, is put directly on the trees. It is a systemic that goes into the trees. It doesn't go anywhere else. It doesn't enter the environment, and it stays in the tree for a period of time. And yes, after a few years, it would have to be reapplied. This is not money to spend on consultants. It's money to spend on saving the trees. And it will buy us time for advances that are being worked on in biological controls so that we could ultimately bring in other biological controls to maintain the Ice Glen. But for now, basically, we have an old-growth forest, and if we don't do something about it, in about three years, we will not have an old-growth forest.
And just a comment. The experts are telling us the trees will die over the next one to three years if we don't treat right now. The only reason we are rushing this through is because we believe, at least, you know, based on the recommendation of the tree survey that we did, by the way, by someone who was the former head of Forestry Health for the Department of Conservation and Recreation, who told me directly that he only supports pesticides as a tool of last resort, and we are there. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Laura.
Laura Duvester, resident of Stockbridge. I was going to make those same points, and it's really that...
Good.
Okay. But I wanted just to say, if someone, if it's an emergency, it's an emergency. If it's an emergency, you don't have, and make the analogy to chemotherapy or something like that, where you don't do it as a preventive measure. You don't do it if it's not necessary. But when it is necessary, people do that to save a life. And we're looking at doing something that's for... Something that we can do. No guarantees. We're not going to get rid of the...
Laura, this is one of the most unique presentations I've ever heard.
It is? Why?
Because we have chemotherapy and tree survival.
That's exactly what it is. It's a good analogy.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? If not, we'll proceed to vote. The voting is open. The eyes have it 91 to 6. Article 28. Roxanne.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $8,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of supporting the work of the Regional School District Planning Board in its study of the financial and educational advisability of options for consolidating the Southern Berkshire Regional School District and the Berkshire Hills Regional School District.
Second. Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Open to vote. The Mr. Softy truck will be here soon. The eyes have it 87 to 7. Article 29.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $95,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of site maintenance and upgrades to the town's tennis and basketball courts.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we're going to proceed to vote. I'm sorry? Yes, it's open to vote, right now. The eyes have it 84 to 11. Article 30.
Article 30. I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $15,000 from available certified free cash for the purpose of hiring lighting consultants for upgrading the town's streetlights.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the article?
I have a question. Louise Gachet, 39 Church Street. What does upgrading mean?
Chuckie, there's a question. Louise wants to know what upgrade means.
Yeah, we're going up to LED lighting and taking over the lights, correct? And we're going to take over the lights. It's going to save the town a lot of money. So it's this proposal would be saving the town electric bills plus taking over the lights will save us about $17,000 a year.
Okay. Does it involve changing the number of streetlights?
Not at this point, no.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote now. Thank you. Can I eat it? Thank you. Unless I started knitting a sweater at the beginning of this meeting, I should be done with it. The eyes have it 83 to 5. 83... 83 to 5. Pardon me. Okay. Article 31.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $135,000 from available certified free cash to add to the amount appropriated for bridge and road projects under Article 1 at the January 23, 2017 special town meeting for the purpose of fully funding the Lurie-Watt Bridge project.
Is there a second? Now you'd like to explain what this is. Okay?
This is with the Lurie-Watt Bridge, with the changes and the things that happened were, just wanted this money in case we have some overrides. They want to go to a special town meeting to get this bridge finished by the October deadline.
I would just add, there was a question posed hours ago about the savings in the highway budget of $74,000, $75,000. That money has been used to support the reconstruction of this bridge. So it got used, it's just in a different place. Is there any other... Is there any discussion about... Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Machines are open. 86 to 1. The eyes have it 86 to 1. Passed. Article 32.
Article 32. I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $20,000 from the cemetery trust fund for the purpose of hiring consultants to study and evaluate the restoration of old stones within the cemetery.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Machines are on. Eyes have it 82 to 10. Article 33. Yeah, and I just want to note for everyone that Articles 80, excuse me, 33 to... Through 37 are, they are appropriations, but they're appropriations from sewer and/or water available surplus, and they do not affect the tax levy.
All right. Article 33. I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $12,000 from available sewer available surplus for the purpose of funding an underground camera system. And no, it will not be livestreamed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, call the vote. Open? Open for the Yes, in a manner of speaking. The eyes have it 87 to 1. Okay. Article 34.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $38,000 from available water operations reserve fund for the purpose of funding the Tuckaman Bridge water main engineering.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll move to the vote. Okay. Open. The eyes have it 84 to nothing. It's a good one. Okay. Article 35.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $3,690 from available water operation reserve funds for the purpose of funding inspection and cleaning of the quiet middle water tanks.
Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing Eyes have it 89 to nothing. Article 36.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $97,717 from sewer available surplus to provide in fiscal year 2021 for a portion of the cost of the debt service payment, principal and interest of the sewer system expansion and update project authorized by Article 3 of the special town meeting of April 1, 2002.
Second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments, questions? Hearing none, we'll The eyes have it 85 to 3. Okay. Article 37.
I move that the town transfer and appropriate the sum of $96,918 from sewer available surplus to provide for a portion of the cost of the debt service, debt service payment, principal and interest of the sewer system expansion and update project authorized by Article 3 of the special town meeting of April 1, 2002.
Is there a second? Patrick, you with us?
Yes.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll Okay, we're getting close. The eyes have it 83 to nothing. Now, starting with Article 38, 38, 39, and 40, all require two-thirds vote, just because of the nature of the funding. So Article 38.
I move that the sum of $600,000 is appropriated to pay costs of restoring the Chime Tower and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing under the authority of general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. Remember, this is a two-thirds vote, and it's two-thirds because there's a bond resolution that's included in it, and that's why it has to achieve that level of a majority. Voting is open. The eyes have it 80 to 11. More than two-thirds. The article is passed. Article 39.
I move that the sum of $145,000 is appropriated to pay costs of purchasing a highway department truck with plow and sander, and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing under the authority of general law, Chapter 44, Section 7.1, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of these costs approved by the vote in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Oxygen, anyone?
Gotta walk the dog.
Is there a second? The motion has been voted and, excuse me, voted, has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on... You think, huh? You want me to slow down?
No, no, no.
If I slow down, I won't make it.
I wasn't...
Danny, you've got a comment?
A comment? Yep. Is it customary for the town to borrow to purchase this kind of equipment?
Yes. Okay. It is. Remember, this is a two-thirds vote. There's no further questions, I believe, and so we'll, we're open. We're open to vote. You got to read one of those, too, as fast as you can.
I won't go that fast.
The eyes have it 89 to 4. It's two-thirds vote. The motion carries. Thank you. I would lose my place without you. You know that. Article 40.
I move that the sum of $720,000 is appropriated to pay costs of replacing the Park Street pump station and all incidental and related costs to be spent under the direction of the Stockbridge Water and Sewer Commission, the money so appropriated to be raised by borrowing under the authority of general law, Chapter 44, Section 8.5, or any other enabling authority, and to authorize the town treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to issue bonds or notes for this purpose, and further, that any premium received upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any premium applied to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with general law, Chapter 44, Section 20, thereby reducing by a like amount the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs.
Excellent. Is there, there's a second? Excellent, excellent. Okay. Is there any discussion, any questions? If not, again, this requires, because there's a bond resolution The eyes have it 87 to 5. More than two-thirds having voted. The motion carries. Article 41.
I move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to request special legislation to create a Beechwood-Lynstock Maintenance District. What this is, is Beechwood requested that this would be a, instead of collecting their fees through association, it would be collected through the taxes, and the money would go into an account that would get turned back to them. And there is a 3%, I believe, charged, that the town would charge for the work that Terry has to do. So it won't count the town any money, and it gets to Beechwood the money that they need to keep their roads and stuff updated.
Is there a second? Thank you. That's okay, that's fine. Art Krieger is at the microphone over here. Art's a resident of Beechwood. He's not a voting member of, but the moderator has the right to recognize guests and taxpayers, I might add, to the microphone. So, Art, if you would, you have some comments to make.
This is a simple majority. It's just a request for special legislation. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the boards and committees, and town meeting members. It's been a long day. I'll be as brief as I can. You've already got a green handout that was passed out at the table on the way in. But for those of you who didn't get it, or who read it five hours ago and don't remember it, let me just hit the highlights. Beechwood is an association of about 120 homes at the south end of Stockbridge Bowl, established around 1940. We have a network of dirt roads, we have a beach, we have a grove of mature trees, we have fairly significant maintenance costs. And the system has always been voluntary. Anybody who buys a house in Beechwood pays a share of those maintenance costs, and it's been about $500 a year, or that's what it is now. But there's no real mechanism to enforce non-payment by anybody. The system has worked well, because almost everybody's always paid, because everybody enjoys the place and values their neighbors and their relationships. But we have had about a dozen non-paying households out of 120. It's down to maybe 10 non-payers this year, but that's just, could be a short-term blip. Here's the problem. As costs go up and as houses turn over, we have no idea whether more people will choose not to pay in the future. And if they don't, and other people are subsidizing those shares of the fixed maintenance costs, it could snowball, and as I said, no effective recourse. The immediacy is that the lead time for dealing with it, such as we're trying to do today, is one to two years. We're halfway through that period. But if a bunch of people don't pay because there's a special call after a major storm, or people just decide not to pay, or the economy tanks and people don't pay, we have no effective recourse in time to keep the maintenance going. We have to be able to repair the roads and the beach and everything every year and not wait two years for the process at that point. The solution that has been recommended by every attorney that we've consulted, and I mean, my predecessors, and by the way, I should have said I'm the president of Beechwood, not just a resident, which is why I'm speaking today. The solution that's been recommended, which has been applied in many towns across Massachusetts, is to establish a maintenance district, which is a governmental, quasi-governmental entity to ensure a steady flow of revenue for the maintenance and repairs. This article is one step in that process. The whole process, the one to two years that I mentioned, is as follows. Beechwood itself voted whether to pursue this, and the association voted by 71 to 8 to pursue this maintenance district. It's got downsides to it. We would be subject to things like the open meeting law, and God forbid, the public records law, and other things that apply to governmental entities, but the vote was 71 to 8 to do that. The second step, we went to the select board in February, and they agreed to put it on the warrant by a vote of 3 to nothing. This is the third step, to request, to authorize them to request special legislation. The fourth step would be if the legislature passes legislation. The draft legislation was the other handout that was on the table this morning. I don't recommend you read that. It's many pages and complicated, but that's been, it's similar to what's been passed for other towns, for other associations. And then if the legislature passes the legislation authorizing the district, it goes back to Beechwood for a vote by all the homeowners who would be in that district. This is just a taxing mechanism, and Selectman Cardillo really gave you the heart of it, which is Beechwood would submit to the town each year, the rep, its budget. What we now raise voluntarily, we would say to the town, here's what we're raising. The town would apply that to the tax bills of the people in the district, nobody else. And then when those people pay their property taxes, and this added a little piece, then that little piece is remitted to Beechwood for the administrative fee. That could be 3%. It'll be, it remains to be negotiated, but that's probably roughly right. So it is just a mechanism to make the payments mandatory instead of voluntary with the enforcement of property taxes behind them. So the bottom line is really, this doesn't change Beechwood's relationship to the town. We're still subject to all town bylaws. We're not, we don't become an independent duchy in the middle of Stockbridge. And it doesn't add to the town's obligations to plow or do anything. Obviously, we get police and fire. It wouldn't change the town's obligations at all. So it's good for the town because it ensures, as Mr. Cardillo said, the stability of the tax base, stability of the values of the houses and properties in Beechwood because it's being kept up properly. With those property values, the town's tax base is protected, no cost to the town, no administrative hassle to the town, just to add this to the bill and handle the money. And we ask that you vote yes on the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Art. Are there any comments or questions about this? And we'll proceed to vote. We're open for voting. The eyes have it 88 to 5. It's a vote. Article 40.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you... Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, town meeting members.
Article forty-two.
Okay, we're almost there, folks. I want to take the opportunity to just say, I don't ever want to hear the term new normal. I think we have proven today that Stockbridge is pretty much back to normal. And I was glad to see that Bonnie Hartley is here. Article forty-two, I move that the town authorize the select board to petition the Massachusetts General Court for special legislation to authorize the town to return original historic documents in its possession to the Mohican Nation, such legislation in the form as set forth in warrant article forty-two, provided further that the select board is hereby authorized to approve amendments that are within the scope of the objectives of this petition.
Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Anyone wishing to speak? And if you would identify yourself, are you a guest here as well?
Yes.
Welcome.
Cole Amalsi, Nidashin Ziteh Kundohat, Minon Jai Mohicanuk. My name is Bonnie Hartley. I'm no longer a resident of Stockbridge, but Stockbridge is on lands indigenous to my community, Mohican Nation, and my ancestors are buried here. I just wanted to thank the town for the opportunity to have this vote on this article. It's really meaningful to our community. When we were forced to eventually remove from the town many of these important historical documents and other cultural items, you know, were unfortunately left behind and not able to be taken with us as we were removed eventually westward to Wisconsin. So, just wanted to thank the town for considering this and for, you know, now some, two hundred and fifty years later, it's really significant to people to even be present and, and, you know, speak at the meeting. So, thank you, and if there are any questions related to the content of the documents under discussion, Rick Wilcox are happy to address those.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak? On behalf of this hearing, none. We'll proceed to vote. And it's open. The eyes have it seventy-nine to four. Article forty-three.
Anishik, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Patrick.
Forty-five?
Forty-three.
Forty-three. Oh. That one, I missed it. I move that the town withdraws a member of the Berkshire County Mosquito Control Project pursuant to section four of chapter one nineteen of the Acts of nineteen eighty-two or other pertinent authority. I apologize, I missed the pin here, my name.
That's okay. Is there a second? Okay. You want to explain this?
We want to, I believe the state allows the town to withdraw from this mosquito control board that we are already a member of. I believe the surrounding towns are not, do not subscribe to it, and they, the money that otherwise, we don't get paid by the state for monies that, that we will otherwise get if we, if we, if we withdraw. And I believe Charlie from the Board of Health could-
Dr. Kenny, did you want to make a comment?
The Board of Health has met on multiple occasions with the mosquito control program. We have not been able to acquire any kind of reasonable understanding of what is being done. This is financial as well as location, and including the fact that more recently toxic chemicals have been found in the sprayed material, and the board wasn't notified about this as of even last year, we weren't notified, even though it was well-known. The, there is no public health benefit to this program, and the towns of Lee, Lennox, and multiple other towns within the county are not, not in this program, they have no imminent disease threat, having not been in the program. Anybody who wishes to use mosquito spraying or solicit that can do that on their own. The CDC, the Board of Health, and the Department of Public Health of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts does not recommend spraying as a first line of defense, they recommend DEET, and DEET is also the first line of defense against lyme disease, which is a real threat here. So, I recommend that we withdraw from the program and that you approve this article.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Hank Schwerner, Lake Drive, also a member of the Board of Health. Just like to say that what the mosquito control board states is that they're preventing eastern equine encephalitis and west nahl virus disease. We have none of that in Berkshire County. I think we've had one case of west nahl virus back in two thousand and twelve, and, which was basically asymptomatic. Most cases are. So, what they're saying that this project does is, is just not here.
Thank you. Eric? Your name and address, please.
Eric Rasmussen, Three Sergeant Street. I'm in favor of continuing with mosquito control commission. I listened to the Zoom where they addressed the select board. They found ten when they tested mosquitoes' west nahl virus. One of the reasons we don't have west nahl virus is because they spray when they find infected mosquitoes. Now, I spray my yard once, in early spring before pollinators are out, for ticks. I don't spray for mosquitoes, but people, senior citizens with underlying conditions, we've heard that recently, can be affected by west nahl virus. So, I'm just going to spray, because that spray kills ninety-nine bugs.
Okay, thank you.
And I prefer not.
Any other comments? I'm sorry, Art May.
Hi.
Gentleman over here.
I'm Christopher Horton, Superintendent of Berkshire County Mosquito Control Project, and I'm here to answer any questions about the project or mosquito control.
Thank you.
Anita Schwerner, Lake Drive. I would ask the town to vote to withdraw from the mosquito control project. The town has been a member since nineteen forty-five or forty-six, okay, probably because nobody really was paying attention. The only way to join the project or to withdraw is by a majority vote at town meeting, so that's why we're bringing it up here. Now, only ten of thirty-eight towns in Berkshire County are members of this mosquito control project. Lee, Lennox, Great Barrington, Egremont, and West Stockbridge do not belong to this program, and there is no significant difference in disease in any of these areas. I asked Jim Willis, who's the head of Tri-Town, who is also in favor of withdrawing from this project, I said, what do you do in Lee for the mosquitoes? And they said, people do whatever they want. So, Mr. Rasmussen can spray his yard, and, you know, the problem that we had is that we really don't know where the spraying's being done, a lot of it's being done at Tanglewood, we're paying for this. Well, actually, the state's paying, and it's over thirty thousand dollars a year. If we withdraw, if you vote to withdraw from this project, the money will come directly to the town, and the town can use it to decide how and where and if they want to spray for mosquitoes. There are some areas like Pinewood's, maybe, where there may be a mosquito problem, but the town can decide what they want to do. There is a real concern about the PFAS that's leaking into the chemicals that are being used, and that it's also poisoning our water, not just the lake, it goes over the lake, it's also getting into our wells. So, there's real concern, and I'm asking you, please, to vote to withdraw from this program.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we're open to vote. The eyes have it sixty-eight to nine. Article forty-four. Stay with us, we've only got two more. Please, don't go.
I move that the town amend its local room occupancy excise under chapter sixty-four G, section three A, the Massachusetts General Law, to the rate of six percent.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion about this? We'll proceed to vote then. And we're open. Open for business. At six percent. The eyes have it sixty-seven to two. The motion is carried. Article forty-five.
Let's see. I move that the town accept the provisions of chapter forty-four, section fifty-five C of the Massachusetts General Laws to establish a trust to be known as the Stockbridge Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Is there a second? Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. And we're open.
Thanks for sticking it out, everyone.
Yeah, just hang in for the last, for the end of the, the meeting. The eyes have it sixty-eight to five. Now, you want to move to? Article? Fifty-five. We're finally there. Anyone doing fifty-five? Just me, huh? Okay. Thank you. If, if there's no other business to come before this, this meeting, I move that the annual town meeting be dissolved. Is there a second? And one, just, just one, one thing I'd like to say. Thank you all for extraordinary patience, thank you for tolerating me, and I just, you know, I neglected, I should have said something at the very beginning about observing a moment of silence for those people who in the last year and, and three months have suffered terribly in, in this town with COVID and who have died, and it would be appropriate, I think, to end the meeting with a, just a moment of silence, brief one. Thank you, and to you all.